Good morning. This November 7th, 2016, meeting of the Compton County Commissioners will now come to order. Will you all please stand as we honor our God and our country, please? Our gracious heavenly Father, we once again thank you for the opportunities to be in your presence and in the presence of our citizens as we do the business of our county. We ask that the decisions we make would be pleasing in your sight and pleasing in the sights of our citizens, and that you give us the strength and the resolve to do what is best to get us through the times that we are facing. We ask your blessing on our nation at this time, and on our state, and on our county. We ask that those that are in harm's way, that they have your special guidance as they do the duty for our country and for our citizens. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Show me the place, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, can.
Yes, sir. Approval of the agenda. No changes other than, I believe, the county attorney is going to remove the attorney-client session. Is that correct?
That was for a report on a case that's not against the county's board relations. I would like to make that report to the board in open session.
Okay. No closed session. Any other changes? Not. Do I hear a motion?
Certainly.
Moved and seconded in discussion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Item two is canon.
Item number two is a presentation, and I would ask our governmental affairs officer, Sally Shutt, to introduce this item.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Brigadier General, retired, Mayberry Bud Martin is the chairman of the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission, which was established in August 2013. Brigadier General Martin, retired from the National Guard after 31 years of service, and he is here today to tell us about the commission's strategic plan for supporting and enhancing North Carolina military missions and installations. There is a copy of the strategic plan. Each of you have received that. I also want to welcome George Breeze, who is a voting member of the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission, and as such, he's a member of the Quality of Life Committee. So General Martin will come forward now with the report.
Okay, well, thank you so much for having me this morning. I've got a little bit of a cold, so I hope I can get through this with my voice. But before we get started, I also would like to say I'm really glad to see Honorable George Breeze here support. He's been just fabulous in supporting our commission and the things that we're trying to do and accomplish. So I appreciate the fact that he's here today. We also, of course, have Senator Meredith is an appointee on from our legislation, and we have Joey Thrasch. We have quite a few individuals on the commission that are from the area here. And also, before I get started, I would like to say that I know you all have had some really tough times with Hurricane Matthews and the floods and so forth. And I just want to tell you that at least in my area of Winston-Salem, a lot of us, we've been thinking about you all. We have you in your prayer. We have you in our prayers. And I know you've got some tough times ahead, too, to probably doing some of the aftermath. So I just wanted to say to you that we're thinking about you out toward Winston and the west part. And in fact, when it was going on, I even contacted George. I said, "George, how you doing down there? Is anything that we can do?" But anyway, I want to say that you're in our prayers. So thanks again for having me. So what I want to do today is just highlight, you do have a copy of what we have in our strategic plan. And really, what it does, it just builds on the governor's forward-leaning strategy to ensure that North Carolina leadership and military preparedness for the decades ahead. And I always talk about this plan. I look at it like it's the kind of 2021 plan. It's out there. Where do we want to go? And what do we want North Carolina to look like down the road? So it basically provides a framework where we all can work together, whether we're state, local governments, agencies, and other stakeholders, so that we can accomplish really that mission and to pursue opportunities to extend our military missions and economic impact on North Carolina. So that's kind of the summary. There are basically four focuses that we have as far as key strategic objectives. And really, these fit right in with each one of our committees that we have, of which, as was mentioned earlier, George is on one of those. So we want to support and enhance North Carolina's military installations and their missions. We think that all our installations, including here at Fort Bragg, there are opportunities to grow. And our major goal is obviously not only protect us for any BRAC coming along, but to be honest with you, we think there's some advantages with the BRAC, and we think North Carolina can gain. Because I think we're working hard to real... They realize that North Carolina is a great place to live, and also, we have wonderful bases here that... And every one of them have a very critical mission. If you look at whether it's the 911 out of Fort Bragg, we've got our Air Force at Seymour Johnson, of course, we have our Marines, and we have our Coast Guard at Elizabeth City. So there's a lot of opportunities, we believe. We want to increase the economic impact of the military defense and industry in North Carolina. If you look at the statistics, you will see that we're ranked number four as far as the size of military in the state. But if you take the one, two, and three states that are ahead of us, all three of those states are also recognized as one, two, and three in defense industry in their state. And the exact number, I don't have, but we are somewhere in North Carolina around 26, 27. So why are we not number four? So I think there's opportunities there, and we want to focus on that and work on that. And we also want to improve the quality of life for our uniformed service members, veterans, and their families. And I may talk about some of our accomplishments about that as we go along. And finally, we want to provide legislative and state agency coordination for military-related issues. So each one of those, again, I mentioned, we have a committee that kind of focuses on those and makes recommendations to the full commission when we have our meetings. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the issues that we're looking at in terms of supporting and enhancing our installation missions. I've kind of highlighted the ones that kind of apply to Fort Bragg and Bull, but you can see there, we want to expand and protect our military ranges on and off the coast. And part of that has to do, which we'll talk about, is Sentinel landscape. We want to be able to slow down encroachment on areas of our training areas, because we are seeing Virginia, South Carolina, and North Carolina. We call it the southeastern battle space. We think there's great opportunities there, because Seymour Johnson has a huge exercise. I think Fort Bragg participates. And we have battle groups off the east. And if you look at the map of Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina, it's very similar to the same eastern part of China. So we think there's real opportunities there as far as joint training, and we want to protect our ranges and our bases. Of course, you can see Seymour Johnson, we are pushing hard, and we think that's going to happen. They're going to get the new fuel tanker. And the most important, we're looking at the F-35 lift fan maintenance. And we will talk about that a little more later. But you can see the two I've added. We want to fully utilize existing facilities, such as ramp space at Fort Bragg for other aviation missions. We are pushing. I know you all probably heard, Senator Burr is with us. Senator Tillis is with us. And we finally got that up to where the commander is saying it's the first priority is we want to do everything we can to see if we can extend the runway here at Fort Bragg. It's been discussed for many, many, many years. And as you get into sequestration and cuts, I think it's getting more and more critical, because if you can't take off with a full load, we can't always depend on the fact that they may have a tanker available to refuel that aircraft in the air when it's got its mission. So we want that aircraft to be fully capable to take off with full load. So we're working on that one. And we want to increase testing and deployment of emerging technologies, such as partnerships already established, not to support all of our Army, but also special operations, which is here at Fort Bragg. And a good example of that is where the Army is starting to recognize that they've got to change some of the ways they purchase items. We think there's opportunities for small businesses, entrepreneurs in North Carolina that have ideas that they can bring to the table that may be very supportive of our military and our special forces. And so, we're working very closely with Scott Doherty here at the North Carolina Military Business Center. He's established a new department. I think he calls it DEF Tech. But we're looking at ways in which these individuals can come to that organization and say, "Hey, I've got an idea here. What do you think?" And he can direct them and put them in the right direction to see if that's something that would work and we could get into the system. And again, primarily, special forces operate, but it could apply anywhere. So those are the things we're looking at there. When you start about supporting our, enhancing our installations, you see number two there, state investment in military facilities and compatible use. I've got it in the slides later, but I'll say now. We tried to get money in this bond referendum that was passed to be able to provide bond money for host communities like yourselves, who have issues or problems that they could come and maybe get money. But it would have to relate to BRAC, something that would improve or enhance the host community so that we are going to be looked at more favorable when you look at a BRAC situation. We put that in the budget. The governor put it in his budget. When it got over into the General Assembly, they said that was illegal. We really can't do that on federal property and so forth and so on. And it ended up, it didn't get in the final budget. But after they approved it, the budget people came back and went, "Oops, we were wrong. We could have put that in there." But, you know, we are where we are. So I will tell you that in the budget coming up in the long session, we had $200,000 in our budget this past two years to provide for grant money for host communities. And we're going to try to see, it may depend a little bit on how the election goes, but we think we're going to look at trying to get $10 million in the long-session budget, that we can provide some grant money for the host communities to help them in issues that they need help with. It's going to basically enhance their installation and emissions at their location. You can see there, state management of resources affecting installations. We want to support military strategic transportation initiatives, and a lot of those you're aware of, a lot of the things we're already doing around Fort Bragg. We want to continue to look at that. Anything we can do to support that and improve that, we want to do. Support Sentinel landscape and seascape efforts. I'll talk a little bit about that later on. And we want to keep lands encompassing military missions, footprints from incompatible and protect our agriculture and military. We find, obviously, with the military, we're a $66 billion industry in this state, second to agriculture. And they're very compatible and working together. A lot of our agricultural locations can also be training locations. Our forestry can be training locations for our special forces or anyone. So that's what we want to focus on there as well. Okay, looking at increasing our economic impact in the state. Obviously, with the F-35B efforts, a lot of people may not know this. I spoke to about 700 veterans the other night at a Veterans Appreciation Night, and I was telling them this. They said, "We didn't know that." But we're headed toward the fact that Cherry Point is going to have in the neighborhood of around 90 of the new F-35B joint fighter aircraft. It's going to be the largest joint fighter aircraft base in the world. And so, we see a lot of opportunities there, not only to make sure that gets in Cherry Point, but the logistical chain, long-term, has some really positive impacts that we want to work on, so that when, at the point, we want to help support and supply some of the parts and everything, we have that opportunity to grow that through the state. Not only the fact that the money and so forth is going to bring to the state just by having those aircraft at Cherry Point. Custom border and patrol expansion. I just want to tell you a little bit about that. At Elizabeth City, they repair and do almost all the maintenance work for their C-130s, but it's only for the border, excuse me, the Coast Guard. They don't do any of the aircraft for custom and border. It's done somewhere else. Well, why should they do that? It's homeland security. Why can't they consolidate? We see opportunities where they can save money. And the interesting thing about it is when we talk about a lot of different partnerships between businesses and government and industry, the aircraft there, they ship them somewhere out west to be painted. And then they ship them all the way back to Elizabeth City. Our thinking is, is if someone out there would like to build a paint shop, and maybe we can paint them right there for them, a business. It gives jobs in North Carolina. So these are the type of out-of-blocks thinking that we're trying to do, so that we can keep the economy growing and grow it here in North Carolina. And of course, the biggest one there is we want to continue to support our military host communities any way we can. You know, there's some limitations, but at the state level, we look at the whole state. But that does not mean that they're individual things that all of our host communities can have a major impact on the economy in North Carolina. So we're working on that. Improve the quality of life. We did a lot of work, a lot of meetings, talking about the K-12 education for our host communities. We have met, when we put our strategic plan together, with every school superintendent at all of our host communities. We talked about the education. Where do you need help? Where do you need improvements? These may be areas, once again, where if we can get some of that bond money in our budget, that we could maybe support or help where there's a need. We know that we've had a lot of discussion. I think, George, you were involved in that with the mental health wing here at Cape Fear Hospital, has to do with their young children of our service members who have some mental issues. We don't really have the capability to support them, so we're having, in some cases, ship them, I believe, to Jacksonville or for the Marines. And some of these young kids, by law, they have to be transported in a van handcuffed. You know, terrible, terrible. So we're looking at some other ways that maybe we could come up with some money. That's being discussed now. How do we... I know the community is here is looking at that, because we've got to have somewhat investment, not only if the community sees it's important, and they want to put some money in it, and we at the state level ought to say, "Hey, can we help them? What can we do?" Because we don't want this. And so, we're having a lot of discussions like that. So that's how we get involved when we talk about the quality of life, where it's schools, whether it's for health, mental health. And the final thing, as many of you know, we've had some of them here, just recently, the governor created, I read this the other day, if I can find it, I may not find it. But anyway, we've got a partnership called the North Carolina For Me. It's North Carolina for Military Employment. And we've got partnerships in that with the USO of North Carolina, with employer support with the Guard and Reserve. And I'll read you what it is. It's the North Carolina for Military Employment is a comprehensive public-private partnership designed to make North Carolina the number-one state for military employment. Established by the governor in 2015, NC For Me leverages existing workforce development resources and technology to implement an employer-centric strategy that educates North Carolina's business leaders, shows small businesses and human resource professionals how to hire military personnel, and it connects military talent to open jobs. And when we have, when they do one, they call it a hiring event. We don't call it a job fair, because when they go in there, we've had experience that 65% to 70% walk out with a job offer. It's not walking around looking and seeing, "Well, what's on this table, that table?" There have already been some pre-planning. We're helping. And as a result of that, you've probably seen in the news, we've reduced veterans' unemployment in half, around 6.2 to 3.1. It's been an excellent program. And we at the commission have been taking some of our money and supporting them a little bit in that effort. And it is a public-private partnership. We got MetLife involved. I think Cisco is involved. So that's going very, Now, when you look at the legislative state agency coordination, we advocate military-related issues to the General Assembly. You'll see later on, one of our main priorities, which we haven't gotten there yet, is a strategic communication plan. And we want to put a communication plan together, similar to what I'm doing right here with you all, is to look at our different stakeholders and communicate to them what we're doing and what are the issues, whether it's the General Assembly, whether it's our congressional delegation, whether it's the normal citizens out there in our state. One of the things that we know that we're up against a lot of time, and I live in that environment, so I can tell you this, basically, people living west of, I used to say Charlotte, but I think I can come a little east and almost say Winston-Salem, except you do have the Air Guard in Charlotte, which makes a big deal. But I'd say, basically, west of Winston-Salem, people have no clue what's going on in the military. They don't know what's going on at Fort Bragg. They don't know what's going on. They have no idea of the impact the military has on our state. So when we have these bond issues and so forth, when you talk, they're willing to support everything, but when you talk military, it's like, "Well, that's not going to help us." And we've got to convince them it will, because whatever happens at our host communities is going to have an impact on 100 counties. Because we want them to not only work here, live here, pay their taxes, but when they get out, we want them to stay in North Carolina. That's one of the reasons why, as part of this, we passed in-state tuition. You don't have to wait a year when you come to North Carolina now before you get in-state tuition. It's immediate when you get out. We want you to stay in North Carolina. We want you to work here. We want you to raise your family. And a lot of our retirees are in the western part of the state. They love the mountains. So we've got to get out there and educate them a lot more about the economic impact that Fort Bragg, Seymour Johnson, Cherry Point, all these Jacksonville has on our community. So I say that because that's part of our advocate plan, but the General Assembly, we got to get them on board, because there are a lot in the General Assembly that just, they don't have the message, not all of them. And we'll have to start over, depending on how the election goes. Obviously, every couple of years, we've got to re-educate. So... And we want to continue engagement on the federal legislative priorities, and we're doing that now. As I talked about, we're engaged when we talk about the battle space. We're engaged when we talk about the lengthening of the runway. We're engaged when we talk about the F-35. We're getting C-17s. The Air Guard is going to get the new C-17 aircraft. We've been working on that. They're going to get it. One area we're focused on is cyber. You hear a lot about how the National Guard is a great entity for cyber. We're working on that. So those are the kind of issues that we're focused on a lot at the federal level to help us. And that really is working through not only our consultant up there, but also through Senator Burr and Senator Tillis. And we're very lucky to have both those individuals. One's on the Intelligence Subcommittee or Committee, and one of them's on the Defense. I mean, you couldn't ask for the right people to be on two things, because they know what's happening out there. Now, very quickly, I'm just going to bounce through a few of these for time. But these are the priorities that we've established to commission. And you can see, the number-one priority we got there is to implement our strategic plan. Number two, as I just talked to you about, is develop a communication plan, which we're working on now. And we're kind of behind on that, like I would like to have been. But the election has kind of slowed us down a little bit on that. And we want to assist our North Carolina working lands groups, installations, with efforts to preserve land near our military installations. And that goes into being designated. And I'll go ahead and talk about that now. Most of you may know that, but I'm going to just read you this. Federal, state, and local national recognition, designation of eastern North Carolina as a Sentinel landscape. Federal, state, and local partners have joined efforts to protect North Carolina's working farmlands and forests, military training grounds, and natural resources and habitat. And as part of the North Carolina Sentinel Landscape Partnership, 33 Eastern and Sand Hill Counties in North Carolina were designated as a Sentinel landscape. This important designation gives landowners and communities access to additional resources and helps encourage compatible land uses in areas where conservation, working lands, and national defense interests converge. North Carolina is the first state with multiple military services, military installations, and counties named as part of the designation. So it's a big deal, and there's some money we have to spend in order to administer that program. And I was told the other day, it's somewhere around $300,000 a year. And I think there's some other money has to come somewhere else, but we are asking in our budget as the commission that we can find $150,000 to help support that, because that is a big deal. And it brings other federal money to help us go out and buy easements, purchase easements, do things that we can help farmers say, "If you continue to farm, let us train on your forests. We can help you." So we're working on that. I think that's probably... Let's see. Transportation, we continue to look at that. You all know about what the governor's plan is on transportation, and a lot of that is focused on where our military installations are. We shouldn't have to go to any state to do anything, in my opinion. We got the National Guard has to go to Georgia right now and train with their tankers. There's some things we're doing in moving the red-cocketed woodpecker clusters out of Jacksonville area so that we can now open up some ranges where now our tanks could actually train there. They wouldn't have to go to Georgia. Same thing with shipping. Why do we have to go to Charleston? Why can't we go to Wilmington? There's some issues there with transportation, ports. And I think we've got to be looking at those, because we should be able to accomplish any military mission we need in this state and get them out, anywhere we want to get them out without having to go to another state. So let's see if there's anything else. I've talked about a lot of those. I'll go on here a little bit. And so, that's kind of a statement I put in that I wanted to say personally, that as the chairman, I look forward to working side by side with all our partners and stakeholders at the federal, state, throughout North Carolina, robust military communities, installations, to implement our new strategy. And I'm grateful for your support and as we move forward. This, I just threw this in here because I thought this would be important for you all. It's not in the strategic plan, but I attended the Association of Defense Communities Summit in DC. And when we go to those, our consultants help us. We meet with all the key people in all of our services. And we met with Ms. Hamrick, who's the Assistant Secretary for Installations, Energy, and Environment. And this is some exact notes that we actually got from her. I'd like to give you all just an opportunity to read that. But basically, what she's saying is, is the Army is going to be given a directive to consolidate and downsize in their installations, to the point that they want no more, they want empty buildings, and if they're old, empty buildings, we're going to tear them down. We're even going to move the fence lines and tighten them up if we have to, which means outside the fence still could be federal land. So to me, there are a lot of opportunities there for the city of Fayetteville and the county to look at enhanced use leases. You may be able to go in and say, "This would be a great location to have whatever, hotel, whatever you think." And you could possibly take advantage of that, and they're working toward that now. And I'm sure sometime in the future here, you're going to be approached by Fort Bragg on this issue. And just to support that, I just pulled this off the other day. I get a newsletter from the Association of Defense Communities, and this is like two days ago or something, talking about Army Strategic Plan emphasizes shedding excess space and preparing for BRAC. So the Army is, for example, contractors that are on the base, that by contract, they really shouldn't be on there, but they have space, so they're letting them stay on base. They're going to go back and look at the contracts and say, "If your contract doesn't say we provide you space, you're going off the base." So they're going to do everything they can to move, consolidate, and tear down old facilities, improve their utility use or whatever. So you can see here, the next round of base closures is primarily the pillars of the new strategic plan. And so, that just kind of supports what they're going to be doing. doing. They're going to focus on balancing funding for maintaining needed facilities and eliminating excess by improving the condition of mission support.